Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. This is the March 12, 2020 work session and voting meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a joint work session and voting meeting. We only have one item on the agenda for the voting meeting. Usually, I don't have any announcements, but I wanted to go over something very important. COVID-19, the coronavirus. I've had several conference calls now with our county executive, Mark Molinaro, and all the mayors and supervisors in Dutchess County, the commissioner of the Department of Health, and his staff as well. We've had four conference calls in the last week and a half. So today, in Dutchess County, they confirmed one case of COVID-19. That person does not pose a risk to other people. They, he is, or she, I don't know if it's a he or she, they are quarantined and they are under the guidance of the Dutchess County Department of Health and New York State Department of Health as well. They're also doing an investigation to see where this person was, who he came in or she came in contact with. And after they find out a little bit more, they will be having another press conference. The county executive had a press conference today at 3:00 to discuss more actions that they deem appropriate. They also discussed the closing of schools. It was not recommended by the Department of Health or the county for several reasons. Number one, school-aged children and young adults, they're not the age group that the virus has really been affecting that much. Number two, nothing has really stopped yet. If everything in our lives stops and work stops, government stops, then possibly it would be a little bit, I should say, quote-unquote, easier to have children at home because who's going to watch the children? Who's going to care for them? And then those children are more apt to come in contact with people who potentially can have the virus, some adults. So these are the things that they discuss, the reasons why they suggest not to close the schools. They are recommending, though, to the towns, all the municipalities, that any mass gatherings of 20 persons or more, that we cancel through April 30th. So this becomes problematic in several different ways for us and for other municipalities. Number one, our town board meetings, planning board meetings, zoning board meetings. We are going to now start going through the agendas with the department heads to discuss what is appropriate and what not to have a meeting about. We're probably guessing now that we will be canceling planning board, zoning board meetings, not the town board meetings as of yet. They are recommending 20 persons more again, that we do cancel these meetings. Today, we took precautions. We did close our Limekiln facility where we have our gym. And we are going to probably be closing our community center where we have our senior, all the senior events happen five days a week. They have meals. Dutchess County prepares meals for the seniors. And three days a week, we have our own senior program there. So seniors and some children and people have compromised immune systems are more problematic when it comes to the coronavirus. If all the normal, everyday persons that have good health, not to worry that this is just like the flu. The precautions are the same for, just like the flu. You should have good hygiene, wash your hands, keep your phones clean and everything else that you use on a daily basis. We did also cancel or postpone our judicial court here for our traffic tickets through the month of April. We have, on average, somewhere between 200 and 250 people twice a week in here. And those people come from all different areas of the state, different states as well. So it's hard to contain people that we don't know where they're coming from. So our court office will be open, but to have court, traffic court will not be happening. The court will send out notices to anybody who has trials coming up on what to do and how to get their new court dates. So we will be posting everything on our website, on our social media pages. So please look out for anything that we are going to be canceling. We are going to send it through GovDelivery as well. This should not be taken lightly. You should understand that there probably will be more cases coming to our community. Right now, there's only one confirmed case. And we're not as accessible to the virus because of our distance from New York and other major cities like that. But we should maintain distance in public and other things that the CDC and the Dutchess County Department of Health are suggesting. They are on our website as well. But besides that, we really have business as usual through town. I've talked to some business owners and they are still upbeat. Things are going on. They have canceled some school events. They are also listed on Wapanger Central School District, Arlington Schools, Carmel Schools, Pauling Schools. We have all those school districts in our town. So whatever school district your child does attend, please check the websites. They have sent out information. As of today, I know Wapanger sent out a notice about 20 minutes ago. So please check to see what will be on and what will not be. If you have any questions, please call the town board members. Please call my office, 221-4303. I'd be more than glad to answer any questions you might have. We are in constant communications with Dutchess County Department of Health, with the county executive's office. And they have been very, very helpful. They have given us as much information as possible. Moving forward with town offices, I'm not sure exactly what we're going to do. I'm going to call on Monday morning a department head meeting to see about what staffing we can leave here for as little staff as possible. But government operations have to continue. Everything has to continue. So we will have a plan to make sure that that is not interrupted as little as possible. So I will get information to everybody as soon as I can. And that's really the only announcement I had. Carol, will we have to call a roll?
Yes, we do. Councilperson Cassidy?
Present.
Councilperson Marinaro?
Present.
Councilperson Franco?
Present.
Councilperson Beeben?
Present.
Supervisor DeLisandro?
Present, thank you very much. So do I have a motion to open the voting meeting?
To move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now open. So we have one issue, one item on the agenda for voting tonight. And that is issue a special solar permit for Phillips Solar Farm. So there's, we will, I will have the professionals give a little description of this project. Would the town engineer start with that, please?
Yes, I have a little summary prepared by a town planner. The Phillips Solar Farm is located on Route 82, just north of Clope Ranch Road. The proposed project is a five-plus-or-minus-megawatt solar array covering approximately 21 acres of the northeast corner of the 183-acre Phillips Farm located at 1196 New York State Route 82. The solar array would have driveway access on Route 82. The proposed solar farm would be located a minimum distance of 200 feet from neighboring property lines located off Hausner Drive and Dogwood Road and more than 650 feet from Route 82. The solar farm would only be partially visible from neighboring properties due to distance, topography, and intervening vegetation. Additional screening along the Dogwood Road property line will be installed to reduce the potential for visual impacts. The proposed solar farm would result in removal of wooded areas at the farm and the grading of approximately 20,000 square feet of steep slopes. To reduce the potential for stormwater impacts, a phasing plan has been developed to allow for the driveway and grading to be completed and stabilized before any arrays are installed. Installation of arrays will start in areas that will not be regraded. The plan also includes limiting the number of arrays constructed at one time to five rows with erosion control measures installed down gradient. Once the area is stabilized in those five rows, the next five rows will be constructed. In addition, an environmental monitor will inspect the site during construction to ensure that the erosion control measures are in place and phasing plan is followed.
Thank you. So this has been going on for several months with the planning board, correct?
Correct. And there's been two public hearings.
Two public hearings we've had. Would the attorney give us a little review about how that is, works with the law, the solar law? I know there was some confusion. Some people might not understand the difference between zoning laws and solar laws. Would you give an explanation on that, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So as you said, I think it's important to understand where we are procedurally tonight. So the application before you, it's an application for a Tier 3 solar energy system, which is under Chapter 100 of the Town Code, which is separate from Chapter 194 of the Town Code. So how this review works is that there's originally an application before the planning board. And in this case, the planning board also served as the lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And so the planning board conducted their review. They had two public hearings in January and February of 2020. And they closed their public hearing in February of 2020 and also granted a negative declaration in February of 2020. And so they completed the public hearing requirement. And I do think that there have been valid questions asked about whether or not, you know, any more public hearings are required. But when you really take a look at the code, Chapter 100 is separate from Chapter 194 of the code. And when you take a look at Article 9 of Chapter 194, there's also a section about appropriate reviewing agencies. That only lists the planning board and zoning board. Due to the complexity and unique characteristics of these solar energy applications, it has its own chapter in the Town Code, which is Chapter 100. So procedurally, all that's left tonight is for your board to vote on whether it meets the requirements of the special use permit.
Okay, and we did have an opportunity for all the town board members and all the planning board members to go out to the site to review where this project would be built. I don't know if any board members did go out, but we had a date when the planner was there to show everybody. I know the chairman of the planning board went and several other members. This is off of Route 82 Phillips Farm. It's a 183-acre farm, beautiful farm. Any comments from the board?
So, Michael, just to be clear, this vote tonight does not really pertain to Town Zoning Code 194. It's totally different from that, correct?
That's correct. It's a separate chapter. And also, I think it's important to note that there are certain references in Chapter 100 to Chapter 194. But under the special use permit, there's no reference to a public hearing under, like the, as there would be under Chapter 194. So they're distinct. And whenever 194 is important, it's referenced in the actual law itself.
Although, like you stated before, there's been public meetings held and all the questions have been answered. So clearly, at this point...
At this point, it would be duplicative. And it's legally not necessary to be duplicative as well. And as you mentioned, there was a public hearing in January and there was another public hearing stopped clearly in February, which was closed. Thank you.
And just to be sure, so everybody's clear that we had to have the special meeting because there were certain dates that they had to meet with the New York State regulations for the solar, is that correct?
I think to qualify for certain incentives.
To qualify for certain incentives, that's right. I'm sorry. And also, they have to, they have by marsh theory, first to remove any trees, is that correct as well?
That's correct, yes.
Any other comments by the board, questions, concerns?
This is, it's going to go on about 21 acres total?
Yes, on the back portion of the farm.
If I'm standing on 82, is that the back-left-hand corner, Judy? No, with the back-left side, right? Oh, back-left side? If I'm standing on 82, it's back-left corner?
Yes.
Okay. Affirmative. Thanks.
All right. With that, Councilman Beeben, would you read the resolution?
Sure. Whereas Phillips Route 82 Solar LLC applied to the town of East Fishkill for the creation of a Tier 3 solar energy system to be located on a northeast corner of 1196 New York Route 82 in East Fishkill. Whereas Solar LLC appeared before the planning board for several months and concluded its public hearing on February 18, 2020. Whereas the project will encompass approximately 21 acres of land. Whereas Solar LLC received a negative declaration from the planning board pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the planning board granted site approval to Solar LLC at its March 10, 2020 meeting. Whereas the town board has reviewed Solar LLC's application and determines that the additional, the addition of a community solar energy system will benefit the residents of the town by providing them with access to cheaper energy rates by providing revenue to both the town and the owners of Phillips Farm. Now therefore be it resolved that the town board determines that the application of Phillips Route 82 Solar LLC meets the special permit criteria of Section 100-8 of the Town Code. And be it further resolved that the town board approves Phillips Route 82 Solar LLC's permit pursuant to Chapter 100 of Town Code.
Thank you, Councilman. Do you have a motion to grant the special ban for a Tier 3 solar energy system?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. And that's all we have for our voting meeting tonight. I'm sure the clerk would like me to close the meeting out.
Yes, I would.
Do you have a motion to close the voting meeting?
Go move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Voting meeting now closed, thank you. Okay, so the second part of our meeting, thank you clerk.
Okay.
The second part of our meeting is our workshop. Tonight, we have a few items to discuss. I just want to be clear, I just want to make a few comments about the workshop so everybody is clear. There was some misconception. The workshop is here for the town board to discuss projects and other ongoings in the town with ourselves and with our professionals so we can find out what we're going to do with next steps with certain things and to get the feelings of the other board members and what we should put on future agendas. There is no voting going on with the workshop. There is no decision-making. It's just a collaboration of ideas and what we should do for the future. I know there's a lot of people on social media trying to chirp in about that things are going to be done. You know, I know about certain things on our agenda today that they were warning people about, that we're going to vote on things. Nothing happens at a workshop like that. If anything is to happen, especially about one of our sewer districts or water districts, we have to have public hearings. We have to advertise them. There will be many meetings discussed about it. So keep in mind that those are the processes. This is just a general discussion with the board members and the professionals. And of course, please, like I always say, don't get your information from social media. Please call us, call my office, 221-4303, anytime. That's our job. Our job is to give you the correct information and we work for you. So whatever you need, please call us. We'll be happy to answer your questions. With that, I want to go out of order since we have our Hudson Valley engineers here to give us an overview of the Carroll Drive Bridge. Why don't we do that first?
All right. Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. I'm Jack Orton. I'm here tonight with Jared Anderson. We're with HVEA Engineers, a local engineering firm based right out of Beacon, just down the road. We're here tonight to give you guys an update on the Carroll Drive Bridge replacement project. We were here just about a year ago to introduce the project to the town board and to the public. We've done a lot of work since then and we're really just here, again, to give you an update, let you know decisions that have been made to date and provide you an updated schedule on the process. This project received federal funds to replace the Carroll Drive Bridge over the Fishkill Creek. This is what we would consider critical infrastructure for the town. This bridge provides the only access into a neighborhood that has approximately 80 homes. So a lot of the work that we've done to date is ensuring that we can maintain access to all of the properties while replacing this bridge and then ensuring that the new bridge will last at least 75 years and alleviate any flooding concerns in the area. So I'm going to hand it over to Jared, who's going to give you some more technical discussion on decisions that we've made to date and provide you with a schedule.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack. Members of the board, Mr. Supervisor. Project location, just outside of Hopeville Junction here, up off of Beekman Road, over the Fishkill Creek, where there's a curvilinear alignment of the creek there. It's just an aerial view. So really, our objective, as Jack mentioned, is to keep access to this community. It's their only way in and out currently. We're going to remove the existing timber bridge, say, three-span bridge. It's, I don't believe it was ever meant to be permanent, but here we are and we're going to take care of that now. So get these wooden piers out of the water, open things up a bit, put in a single span, open that hydraulic opening, fix the stream bed a bit, and of course, restore the pavement approaching the bridge. So after some back and forth, we've been working with the town engineer. We've settled on a precast concrete box beam style. Essentially, if you can think about what a concrete box would be, if I can show you the next slide. It's simply some rectangular sections. There should be about eight across. And as far as looking at the bridge, if you were standing in the water, it's going to come up about two, the roadway surface is going to come up about two feet from where it presently is. And why would we choose this over any other option? Well, simply, it does offer the shortest duration of our options and the lowest cost of our options. Also considers future maintenance. Some other alternatives may require such as steel, possibility for rust repairs, things like, things of that nature. It also allows, down the line, when it ever comes time to replace this bridge in the future, that it could be done in such a way as not to do what we have to do. In this stage, in this case, is to put a temporary bridge alongside the current bridge to remove the existing bridge and replace it. In the future, now, you can essentially cut the bridge in half. It's also appropriate, concrete in these flood-prone areas. It's a smooth bottom, isn't like traditional steel girders where debris can get caught underneath, trapped, and cause some maintenance nightmares. We did look at three other options in this process. Traditional steel, as I mentioned, steel girders, as you see all over the roads, a steel truss, and another concrete option, which would be T-beams, which they form the deck basically and the beams at the same time. And they cart those to the site. Reasons we dismiss these three alternatives, each, all of them had longer construction durations than the box beam alternative and higher costs. Along with that, future maintenance, as I mentioned, steel repairs, possible painting of either steel girders or the truss. Steel and water, not the greatest mix. So concrete is favorable for that reason. And the T-beams particularly are very heavy. Transportation would be a potential issue. Getting them over the temporary bridge might be an issue and it might require two cranes, which immediately drives up cost. The T-beams are also at that span, approaching 80 feet. It's about as long as you want them to be so they would be kind of maxing out in their design. And on a whole, they're just, they're a little bit excessive for a neighborhood bridge and they're a little more industrial, trying to go for something that balances use and need with aesthetic. So where we are now, of course, we mentioned we've determined that preferred alternative of concrete box beam. The final design report went in last month. We received very few comments and have already turned those around. We only have one outstanding issue, Mr. Supervisor, if I may. We have a form that you had previously signed. The state asked us to update two minor things on it and they just wanted a fresh signature and date. I'll leave that with you. Once we turn that form back in, we believe we've met all the requirements to get the thumbs up from the state DOT to move forward with final design. We hope for that by the end of this month. Then that will allow us to finish out the design throughout the spring so that by the end of the summer, we'll have a set of plans, specifications, proposal, and a final estimate ready to go back in to review with the state. Maintenance of traffic, making sure people can get in and out. This was mentioned previously, but in some, might be a refresher to everyone. It's about an eight-to-12-month job, depending on weather, how fast the contractor, availability of materials, lead times, things like that. And of course, everybody affected by this project, and even on a town level, will be notified as construction draws near, which hopefully that will be either end of this year, beginning of next. So to really ramp it up in the spring when traditional construction season starts. Planning on reducing down to one lane with a traffic signal on each end. We do have some driveways right there. Making sure that driveways are also covered in this traffic plan so they can get in and out safely. That's first and foremost. And of course, in order to do this, put a bridge alongside a bridge, we do have impacts to private property. And this is just an aerial view. The red is the current bridge that will be removed. And we're going to push to the, call it the northwest side, if you will, and do like a little S curve to get around that. There are some, I'll explain a little bit on another slide, but some permanent acquisitions by the town and then also some temporary easements, which are essentially rentals for access and materials. That's just a view of if you were standing on the bridge. We need to keep a certain distance apart from the existing bridge. We do have some utility poles that we need to avoid, or we'd like to avoid. We don't want to move any utilities if we don't have to. And the roadway is about, almost approaching a 14-foot platform, if you will, for the road itself. And then, can't leave it off the side would be a five-foot-wide path for anybody who does walk through this neighborhood. It's not really a, there's no sidewalks here, but we need to make pedestrian accommodations regardless. So as I mentioned, property acquisition does need to happen for both the construction of the actual bridge and any future access and maintenance. So anybody who's been affected has already been contacted in some way. Some we've even met with over the summer, last summer. And more recently, myself and one of my engineers went out and staked out some of the easements approximately to demonstrate to some of the owners what, you know, for those who have the greater impacts, what those impacts would be. And essentially, everybody gets taken through the process the same way. Appraisal, that appraisal is reviewed by an independent appraiser. That offer comes before the town. The town approves that offer and sends it to the property owner. If the property owner accepts, go to closing like you would do a traditional real estate transaction. So right now, most recently, within the last week or so, our consultant, R.K. Hyatt, one of the best in the business in New York State, in fact, Tom Hyatt, one of the, one of the owners, is in contact now with the property owners. I believe three of the four he's actually met with or spoken to. And one, more the recent person who's moved into the neighborhood, Minatino. He's trying to reach out to them as well. The actual maps, the maps that get filed in the county clerk's office and attached to the deed, we're just finishing up some of the legal language on that. So those will be done shortly. And appraisals, where the owners will be given the opportunity to meet with the appraiser, to be present so they can ask questions, be present, and understand what the process is. That should happen within the next two weeks. Now, this is similar graphics. And this is the finished bridge in place. And what you see is there's a couple of different colors here. It might be a little hard to see. The outer extents, if you will, the crosshatching, look like squares. Those are temporary impacts. And those at the end of the project, that will go away. And what you're left with, closer to the inside of the bridge, where it's just a single hatch, like a single line, vertical line, are the permanent purchases. Mainly for support of the bridge and structure. The town needs to own the land that supports the bridge and any part of the structure and any part of the roadway that gets supported as well. So relatively speaking, at the end of the day, after the temporary impacts go away, they are relatively minor acquisitions in the grand scheme. Funding, as Jack mentioned, this is a federally funded project through a program called the Surface Transportation Program. New York State Region 8, that's the Hudson Valley, essentially up to Columbia County, down to Westchester, over to Orange and Sullivan. I'm sorry, Orange and Rockland. They oversee this project. Current construction cost estimate is just over $2.1 million. Current construction cost estimate is just over two point one million dollars. Schedule-wise, so now we're in that February-March timeframe, we're hoping to obtain that design approval, the signature of the supervisor today. We'll submit our draft plans, basically our draft construction document package to the state by the end of summer, get their blessing. All the while, right-of-way process is ongoing in the background, so that by the time the fall rolls around, we have a final, final document blessed by everybody, and we can get going with construction either end of the year or beginning of next. With that, questions, comments?
Great, it's been a long time coming. The residents will be happy to get, get a new bridge, that's for sure.
I got a, I got a question. So at the beginning of your presentation, you said that you planned to keep this bridge around for about seventy years, and that the material that you chose for the projects is, cost was very important for that measure. As far as the material, I mean, you drive around New York, and you see, you drive under these bridges, and there is a lot of deterioration. We usually use salt and sand during the winter. I love the idea that this will be around for about seventy years. How consistent is that statement with whatever we use to, during the winter months, to keep the roads clear?
Sure, sure. All right. So this project is federally funded. With that federal funding, we have to adhere to New York State DOT design standards. There have been a lot of advancements in concrete technology over the past twenty, thirty years, concrete's come a long way. Their design mixes are specifically engineered to resist the effects of salt, in particular, as all roads are heavily salted. So everything will adhere to the current, you know, modern, nationwide, and New York State DOT standards, they've been proven to last over seventy-five years. That is actually a minimum design life that the feds require when giving you the federal funding for these replacement projects.
Very good. That's, that's good news.
Any other comments, questions?
You said that you'll be clearing out debris under the bridge, or I guess helping with the flow of water in that area? Is that true? Any sort of dredging or anything like that?
No dredging. Basically, if there's anything down there that's causing any issues, immediate issues within the stream, especially those, those piers that are there, those wooden piers, that's, that's part of what will be removed to just essentially open the channel and prevent future debris from getting caught up, tree, you know, limbs and things that fall during storms and rush down, it'll, it'll open things up.
Yeah, that area is very susceptible to flooding, so I was wondering if we were going to make it any cheaper, but...
That's the hope there.
Scott, did you want to add anything?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, very good. Hey, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. And as construction comes closer, we will be having more reach-out with the residents in those, in that area, sending notices out, on timetables and everything else, so we will be plastering a lot of information out there, so keep your eyes and ears open for that. Okay, we went out of order. The next item is funds for highway equipment. So, we have a, we have a, how old was that bond that we are paying off currently, Mark?
It was a fifteen-year bond originally, taken in two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five, we took out a bond for two million dollars, and the town utilized that money to buy new equipment for the highway and also pave more roads. As everybody knows, the paving referendum did fail by sixty votes, and with that, we are in a predicament of paving roads. So fortunately, or not, if the, if the paving referendum passed, we wouldn't have to take out another bond, but since the fact is that we didn't have the referendum pass, we will have to probably, with the town board's approval and voting, take another bond out for two million to do the same situation that we did fifteen years ago, buy equipment and pave more roads. So I wanted to get a little discussion tonight about how everybody feels about that, everybody knows the situation going on at the highway department. The new liaison, Councilman Marinero, has been heavily involved lately with all the equipment and situations going on at the highway department. Councilman, you want to discuss something about that?
Yeah, so, I mean, since I started getting involved with the highway department, I stopped over there frequently, probably once a week or once every other week, I talked to the head mechanics over there, I go in the shop, I see what's going on, the repairs. You know, this, we all realize that the equipment that we're dealing with, it's not new equipment, you know, and these guys are spending a lot of money in repairs. Some of the repairs, they're very expensive. I mean, I know that there was a piece of equipment that, that needed a lot of repairs, and they, the call was, is it better off buying something new and not investing in repairs? And I believe we bought a big Baco right before around Christmas time. So there was one of the equipments, was it a loader?
We bought a loader, right?
That was last year.
Right, last year. So they were very happy with that. I, you know, the plan is, after discussing with the town supervisor, the highway superintendent, and also many, including and not excluding, the head mechanic, is yes, we do need equipment that is applied in place, we're all working on it right now, to look for equipment that is not going to be very expensive, but right now, I believe we need two pieces of equipment, which are quite pricey, and one probably could cost in the, around four hundred thousand dollars, right, Ken?
Around four hundred to four hundred.
What is the equipment that we're looking at?
We're looking for a jet vac, a grade-all, and also, we got to keep in mind, our Bacos are getting old, I think our newest Baco is a two thousand and three. Our plow trucks are also very old, some of them are, some of, I think our newest plow truck is a twenty fifteen. Some of our older plow trucks go back to ninety-three, ninety-two.
So how old is the grade-all that we have?
Nineteen ninety-five.
And can you explain to the board, what does the grade-all do, and do you utilize that, a piece of equipment every day?
Just about every day, it goes out, it's a large, it's a large machine, it's for trenching. I took our councilman out this week, he came out, and we took a ride up to Lee Town Road, where we're working. It cleans out our ditch lines, it also can set catch basins, you know, it, it, it's almost a machine that gets used every day.
And how often are you repairing that? Is it...
We, we're, it's nickeling and diming us, pretty much.
So the bulk of the work is mainly done by the, not the truck itself, you know, it's the piece in the back of the truck, those mostly, the work, vacuum, and that is what, right now, it's not really working properly, there needs a lot of repairs. So I think I was at the shop, at the garage this week, and we realized that the truck itself could be reused.
Oh, for the jet vac?
For the jet vac.
Yeah.
The, the truck is not in bad shape, so the mechanics will be able to remove the body that is on the truck right now and use it for other things.
That's good.
And I also, right now, I believe, we're renting the, the other piece of equipment by the grade-all.
We're leasing, we're leasing the grade-all right now.
Right, we're leasing it.
Option to buy.
And I went, and they were working on, I was on Mounta Road, I stopped by and I observed what this equipment does. They said they really need it because it opens up the roads, the side of the roads, and, you know, these guys, they can't do without this equipment. You know, we're working, I mean, we realize that things, certain things are indispensables, and the guys at the shop realize that, I mean, the highway superintendent, you know, he's working with us, with the town board, in addressing these issues, and the head mechanic, we're all on the same page. But, you know, if we, if we get the bond, we have to kind of, I have requested to see a list of what equipment we have, I think they're working on that, so that I could give it to the board, you guys could all see what we got right now, as far as trucks and equipments.
Excellent.
So that we could evaluate what needs to be bought before anything else. Again, you know, they're going to buy equipment now, that could be used all year round, they're not just going to buy equipment that could only use, be used one month out of the year.
Two months of the year, right.
That's going to help. We also worked, or are in the middle of working a plan for keeping this equipment in the best shape possible. So, you know, for the first time ever, I think they were going to look into programs once the equipment is no longer needed for either salting or paving, there are companies out there that could do undercoating, and that's going to give us more years in the life of those trucks.
We've already, we've already had a company come in to undercoat some of our newer vehicles that we have purchased since I took over, where my head mechanic, Keith, and I have been very involved with, trying to maintain the newer stuff, and not, not that we're not maintaining the older stuff, but the newer stuff.
Especially.
Especially. You know, you guys have all come over, every single one of yous have seen what we're working with and what we're dealing with. You know, the last big storm, not that we had a big storm, but the last plowable snow, we had four of the older trucks go down, and I know Councilman Marinero came to see that as well. So, you know, we're, we're all working together, you guys know that, and we're also looking at some grants, Nick and I talked, and Mark.
Yeah, so the, the issue is, of course, money, money's always the issue.
Sure.
But two pieces of equipment alone, the grade-all's three hundred and fifty thousand, the jet vac is four hundred and fifty thousand, so right there is almost a million dollars. So Kenny did speak to one of our engineers in the planning department there, Rick Witt, and he looked into some grants, because a portion of our town, as everybody knows, is in the DEP watershed, and they offer grants for equipment that will assist in keeping the DEP watershed maintained and, and clean out catch basins, so possibly, hopefully, we can qualify for a good portion of that truck, that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck, it's a jet vac, we can get a grant for. Otherwise, we're going to have to, have to either lease to own, or we're going to have to just buy it outright. The comptroller and I are both on the same page, where we rather not lease to own, we rather pay as we go, so we can save that interest money and use it towards other equipment, but when you're talking about equipment this expensive, it's difficult to do that. So I think with a combination of grants and this bond that we possibly will have to take, my recommendation would be to utilize maybe, maybe three or four hundred thousand, maybe a little bit more towards equipment, and the rest put towards paving. And this year's been very good weather-wise, so we could utilize those savings as well for more paving, so next year we can have a real nice paving budget. This is things that the board has to discuss and, and tell me your feelings about, because we're going to have to move forward on that.
Absolutely. Kenny, first of all, thank you, you and your guys, especially your mechanics, for all you guys have done. Seems like you're constantly repairing that stuff, and like you said, we've all been down there, and you showed me a lot of the equipment, it's in certain disrepair, so we know that help is needed, so.
Thank you, guys. You guys always come, every time we call, you guys are there, so.
Yeah, thank you, Kenny, for all the work that you've put forward towards us already. To our comptroller, is there any way we can get like an annual, like average per equipment, how much we spend in, in repairs?
We probably, over the last two years, have spent about four hundred thousand dollars in repairs.
That's quite a number.
It's a big number.
So even though we might be, you know, spending money to purchase new equipment, we might realize a savings there right off of that.
There certainly will be a netting effect, yeah, that...
Absolutely.
And you know, keep in mind, this, you know, we're the largest town square miles way in, in Duchess County, so you know, we have fifty-four, fifty-six, fifty-six square miles, it's, it's large, there's a lot, we need a lot of equipment, we, there's a lot of miles on that equipment.
Thank God we didn't get a lot of snow this year.
Yeah, thank God, that's right.
So, you know, the other thing that I want to mention, working with these guys, is that I, I, my feeling is that they've come a long way, I mean, the department as a whole, in the last probably two, three years, there's been a real transformation, I gotta say. You know, they realize, they realize that where we're at, and that this town board, for the first time probably in a long time, wants to spend the money the right way, and they're working with us, looking at equipment, you know, let's, let's be realistic, there are people that would like to drive a certain type of truck over another, but, you know, talking to these guys right now, that's not the case. You know, some people are fan of a Ford or whatever else, right now, they're looking at equipment that is going to do the job, and it's going to last, and it's going to be the best equipment for the money that we're spending. So being there and dealing with them on a, on a weekly basis, I, I see, I got to thank them for really coming forward, and their mentality's changed, so I, I think that the town will benefit. And again, we, what we're doing now, the implementation stage, and if we work diligently and smart, we're all going to see the results, probably not this year or next year, but probably five, ten years from now. And this is going to be thanks to the town board, and thanks to the department that is working together, to really to get the job done. We also went around this week with the highway superintendent to look at quite a bit of roads that they need help. I have to say, showed me some roads that they paved last year, and they did a good job. So with whatever money they, they have available, I think you guys are going to probably, got willing, be able to pave quite a few roads.
Yeah, I mean, Scott worked with us a lot as well, you know, when we were out there doing our blacktop, and we analyzed what we needed to do, so when we do pave the roads now, we're trying to start from the bottom, you know, if the drainage needs to be done, we do the drainage prior to going out and paving our roads, making sure we're not paving over rotted pipes, catch basins that are in disrepair, we do all our tree work prior, so we don't have to come back, clean our ditch lines out. So we're not working on a freshly paved road, coming back again later, digging it up to change a rotted pipe, so we're really trying to go forward in the correct way.
Right. We all agree that, you know, while driving on these roads, I mean, we drove on certain amount of roads, I don't remember the names, where, you know, you can't really make it up with a truck, that's how steep these roads are, you know, and we agreed that, you know, just doing a facelift is not the answer, it's going to look pretty, but then, a year later, we're going to have to adjust the problem.
Right.
So we look to the curves, and, you know, I, I mean, we agreed, and I spoke to the town engineer about it, he's going to come out and give us a hand, looking at what needs to be done, because you need to address the way the water comes down these mountains, at the speed, you need to slow that down, right, Scott? That's an important factor also, right?
Well, if we're getting erosion on the, on the edge of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, again, they're just not rushing to doing things, like the highway superintendent you said, we want to do it right, where we're going to have a good lifespan on the road, when we do the work, so that's, that's the other important thing that we all agreed on.
That's great. Well, Kenny, thanks for...
Anytime, guys.
Keeping the board updated. I know there's a lot to do, and you guys have been doing a great job. So what I will do is I will prepare a possible analysis of how to spend the, the grant money, oh, grant money, I wish it was grant money, the bond money, and Mark and I will work up something, I'll give it to the board for your comments and questions, and we'll go from there.
So the payment should be the interest rate about the same that you've been paying?
No, probably less, right?
Hard to know, in the same ballpark, we're paying about a hundred fifty thousand a year on...
Hard to know in the same ballpark. We're paying about a hundred and fifty thousand a year on the cur- just the bond that's just finished off.
Yeah.
That was two million dollar bond, so I would guess in that neighborhood, it may be a little better.
So it won't change the bud- budget line either?
In theory, no, we could just keep that budget line the same, right?
The, uh, the vac, how many, how often do you use that a day, a month?
Which, which one? The vac, the jet vac?
Jet vac.
Well, if it's up and running and the temperatures are above freezing, we'd like to get that out there every day. We have a certain amount of ca- of catch basins that we do have to clean per year, especially being in the town, um, the, uh, the DEP and, and the New York City watershed.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, would that big a, a ticket item be able to be a shared service between another town to...
No.
That's not an item we wanna share. A hop, a hop box, a hop hatch machine we're looking at with, also with Wappingers and possibly Fish Gill. That's an item we might wanna share with our neighboring towns, especially in the winter for filling in the potholes.
All right, well, well, now, don't get any toys on your list there, you know?
I've got a large wish list, but...
Not even getting another truck for yourself.
You know, um, while we're on the subject of borrowing and stuff like that, I, I know that we went to the Association of Town this year again. Mark, in the past, when we were, uh, when we were sitting in the classrooms over there and they were talking about budgeting and finance, uh, the importance, uh, I don't know if you had the same sense this year, but in the past, the importance was always on a strong fund balance. You know, I sat in the same classroom this year and they went three sixty on that issue. They said that, uh, i- in the past, they used to, uh, put a percentage of what the fund balance should be. Right now, they said it should be up to the town board, uh, discretion. And it's weird because these so-called professionals, did you guys, uh...
Nick didn't see anyone. I didn't make it.
Okay, you didn't make it. But, but it, it's, no, no, what I'm saying is like, we, we kind of, uh, work our own things, our own hard issues, the board. But if you listen to these professionals, that they come from whatever, Albany or whatever and trying to tell us how to do our town business, they, it's like the way they wake up one morning, they say, okay, you need to go this way, you need to go that way. So I just will figure I wanna throw that in. And when I heard those comments this year, it's just, for the last three, four years, you were saying, you know, save, save, save. All of a sudden, now, they're saying that if you don't bond, maybe you're not doing a good job as a town board member.
Well, because bonding frees up other capital.
Well, yeah, and I think bonding, it's, it's all case by case, right? We, you, it's good to bo- or borrow to buy a house, probably, right? Otherwise, you're waiting twenty years before you can live somewhere, but it's maybe not a good idea to borrow for groceries.
Right.
So...
I, I just figured I, I throw that in because eh, it's, uh, you know, again, we usually work together and to get, to get things done the right way, but...
Keep no fund balance, let me know how the audit works.
No, fund balance is still, yeah. Fund balance is still very important.
Spend it all.
Right. And it also, uh, helps when we do bond to have a healthy fund balance.
Right.
Uh, we get a higher bond rating, lower interest rates.
Okay, so I'll be getting something through the board that we could, you guys can review and we'll discuss that again. Number three, Little Switzerland Water. So Little Switzerland is very, uh, apt to having many breaks. Uh, the system was built on rock, the engineer can, uh, give a little more description and, uh, insight into that. But basically, what I understand is that the way the system was built many, many years ago, uh, the where the pipe lays on top of the rock ledge, it's apt to have more breaks, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
So, uh, Scott, you wanna give us a little overview about Little Switzerland?
Yes, so every year of all our water districts, Little Switzerland incurs the, the most water main breaks. Uh, as the super advisor said, the, the old pipe, cast iron pipe installed roughly fifty years ago and in many cases, it's, it's laying right on the rock, a little bit shallow and right on top of the rock. Um, so, you know, every time we have a break, there's a water shutdown, people lose service, it stirs up sediment. Uh, the, the risk, we have to have boil water notices, so it, you know, it's certainly an inconvenience to the residents, not to mention the fact that, you know, on average, we spent over the past five years, forty-five thousand a year, you know, in repairs. Uh, so it's just, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that maybe we need to take a step back, take a look at, just like we look at the equipment, you know? How, for how long are we gonna keep putting, you know, good money after bad and just putting Band-Aids on this pipe before we really, you know, consider biting a bullet and replacing, replacing the pipe? So we did take a look and, uh, to try to see if we could pinpoint, you know, the most effective way to, to, uh, set up a program to replace not the whole system, but the system or the portion of the system that incurs the most breaks. So, um, we determined that past five years, approximately eighty-three percent of the breaks in Little Switzerland incur on Ennsbrook, Dogwood and Mountain Pass roads. And that would consist of approximately a mile and a half of pipe, seventy-five hundred feet of pipe. And we estimate that cost to be approximately two point eight million dollars. Uh, of the forty-five thousand dollars a year we spend currently, about thirty-seven thousand five hundred is concentrated i- in that area. The other portion of it is just scattered, you'd have to, you wouldn't get a great benefit per, um, foot of pipe replacement, so to speak, because it's spread out so far. So if we just focused on those three roads, um, we would save approximately thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year in repairs. Uh, the difficult part is that it would cost the residents of Little Switzerland approximately a thousand and forty-six dollars per year additional in their water bill. Now, I know that's a lot of money, but at some point, you know, the system's gonna get to a point where instead of spending forty-five thousand dollars a year, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, you know, it's, it's not gonna get better, it's, it's only gonna get worse over time, so. Uh, I think it's just something that should be, you know, discussed, talked about, maybe engage some of the residents. I'm not suggesting that we do it tomorrow or the next day, but, you know, at, at some point, this is gonna need to get done.
So there's a hundred and thirty-five homes there, it's, you know, it's not the largest district, correct?
Correct.
So...
Well, it, it, it's kinda up there, though.
It's not a small district.
Yeah.
Not a small district, but...
It's a mid-range district, yeah.
The cost, you know, that's costly, a thousand, over a thousand dollars a year. Um, this is why I made a comment earlier about why we have these work sessions to discuss what's going to happen. I had a call from a resident from, uh, Little Switzerland today saying, well, is this going to be voted on tonight? I said, absolutely not, we're just here to discuss, to hear from our professionals what is going on with your water system, how we can help repair it, what the cost will be. If this is to move forward, we would have a, engage with a community meeting with all the residents of the Little Switzerland Water District and, uh, discuss what the pricing would be and the potential to, to, to do this potential fix. Um, and then we have to have public hearings, uh, ultimately have a vote of all the members of that water district, is that correct?
That, well, it wouldn't necessarily be a vote of all the members, but you would hold public hearings and then they'd be, it would be subject to permissive referendum if you did pass a rate increase.
Right, so the town board can pass, but it's subject to permissive referendum. So there's a lot of factors that go into this, uh, this is just an initial beginning discussion. Uh, what's the board's take on this?
So, Mark, the, uh, we would see hopefully estimated about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year savings in repairs. Do those repairs get built back to that district?
Yes.
So approximately, how much would that be per resident per year kind of thing? That'll offset the thousand dollars.
So it's about two hundred and seventy-two dollars in savings, but that's already been...
It's already factored in.
Oh, that's already factored in, too, right? So maybe it would be a little less than a thousand, a little more. We, it's, we're, we're also estimating on interest rates and things like that, we went a little bit high.
Right.
But, you know, just to be on the safe side.
Understood.
They would pay approximately a thousand dollars more as a net increase.
Got it.
Scott, how old is that old system over there, that water system?
I mean, approximately fifty years.
Fifty years?
Fifty years.
Fifty years old?
Yeah.
And how long?
Well, say nineteen seventy, you know, that's fifty years ago, right?
How long did the town, how many years ago did the town take that dis- over?
Well, that's before my time, so at least fifteen years or...
Fifteen, twenty years?
Twenty years ago, yeah. I know the tank was replaced, it used to have an old concrete underground tank with a, with a wooden roof that collapsed and I think it was a borrowing for that, for that tank replacement, I don't know when that bond's coming. Gonna be closed out, but that was the last major improvement up there, was the replacement of the water tank.
So this system, uh, they have their own well nearby over there?
Yes.
Yes, halfway uphill. And treatment, everything.
The treatment is just chlorine.
I mean, the good thing about it, it's, it's a good idea that we talk about it and that the town engineer is giving us all the figures. I mean, I, I would bet that probably that thousand dollars by the time we talk about it and implement, if in case should go through, it's probably fluctuate, uh, a few extra bucks here and there because...
We look at it...
Interest rates, we don't know what...
Well, not interest, even the cost of construction, if, let's say, we do it two years from now.
Kinda just give you a little, we looked at this approximately ten years ago and, and back at that time, we thought it was gonna be around four hundred dollars a house and that seemed like a very large number. And, and you wish you had done it now because, you know, now it's up, now it's up to a thousand, wait another ten years.
Right, what the prices will be.
Sure.
Just take, for example, we just had a, uh, an update on the Carroll Drive Bridge. I remember three years ago when we got approved with the, uh, on tip for that...
The initial application.
The, the, the budget was one point one million, what did he say it was now?
Two one.
Two point one million.
There's a few factors that contribute, but right now, you know, it's very busy out there in the industry. Contractors are all busy, busy, the ones who survived the recession. And, you know, i- it's not a great time to be putting jobs out to bid right now. It's great if you're a contractor, but not so much if you're putting out the bid. So I think ideally, if we could have a plan in place, plans approved by the health department and just wait it out to the next little slowdown, you know, when maybe the contractors are a little hungrier than they are today, I, I think that would be an ideal time to, and a, and a plan to, to get it out to bid.
And it would take time anyway, we need engineering, we need everything. We have to go through the, um, uh, office of court, I'm, uh, office of, um...
Water and Control.
Water Control, right, yeah, so...
Yeah, it would at least be probably a two to three year process. Cause this is over the threshold, so it definitely has to go to the Office of Water and Control, state office.
Would there ever be any grants or bond, uh, grants for stuff like this?
Well, you know, grants typically are for water quality and the issue's not water quality. You know, if you have contaminated water, you can get a grant, you know. Whirlie and Revere Park qualify because they got, you know, water quality issues, but this is, this is not water quality. It's just, you know, the fact that we keep throwing money every year to fix it, fix the old pipes.
Or grants qualify for lower income areas, but this is...
And again, it won't qualify for that either.
This is definitely not that, right?
It's good to get the conversation started and then we can engage the constituents.
And Scott, as far as, uh, replacing the existing pipes, what kind of material would you be using?
Well, well, there, there's two options, there's ductile, which is the Cadillac, so to speak, and then there's, you know, PVC, which is the Chevy. Uh, right now, we're looking at the Chevy, you know, but plastics installed everywhere and, you know, plastic lasts a thousand years.
Can you use that anymore? Oh, those bags.
It's also the bedding, right, that you would have...
Well, you have to have proper bedding, can't sit right on top of the rock. See, cast iron is brittle, so, you know, you take a brittle object sitting on top of a rock, it's just prone to crack all around its circumference. If it had been ductile iron pipe which came along another decade later, we, we wouldn't be having these problems. Or not nearly as many problems, let's put it that way.
Right.
Ductile, you can run over with a bulldozer, cast iron breaks, so that's the difference.
So, does the board want to, um, do more discovery on this, do we wanna have a meeting with the public?
If it's such a long process, I don't see why not, yeah.
To see what their thoughts are, yeah?
Oh, I, I probably, having a meeting with, meeting with the public, I remember when we were gonna acquire the...
Salt Tower, Whirlie Hammers.
When we were gonna acquire the country club, uh, property over there, there was a water and sewer. We met with the community a few times and...
Oh, yeah.
I think it, it's beneficiary so that they could ask some questions and then they're gonna come back and ask more questions and suggestions. So probably, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Okay, so I'll schedule, um...
Maybe you wanna wait until this virus is, uh...
Yeah, we can't have it.
Well, we can't have it anyway, so we'll look for something maybe towards the end of the summer or the fall.
In the middle of the summer, yeah.
Yeah.
They give time to get a little more paperwork to, or homework.
Yeah, the engineer, he's not that busy, he could...
That's where we're gonna, that's where we're gonna give him a couple of months.
Okay, and speaking of that, uh, Fish Gill Plains, there's many businesses in the Fish Gill Plains area, down three seventy-six, who have been asking for town sewer. Uh, many businesses in that business district suffer because, uh, the board of healths, uh, are, the board of health is very stringent on the amount, their capacity of sewer, uh, or their septic for their buildings and they're not able to rent to maybe restaurants or certain other, uh, uses because of their restriction on sewer. So, we had the engineer do a little analysis about bringing municipal sewer down three seventy-six to serve as Fish Gill Plains. Scott, you wanna, uh, give us a little overview on that, about your memo?
Uh, yes, uh, you know, a similar thing somewhat occurred with Wildflower Hills, uh, maybe about seven or eight years ago. They, in, in that particular case, they had a sewer plant that was failing and we were able to partner with them and rather than put the money into the sewer plant, we installed a pump station down three, uh, three seventy-six and, and bringing that into the Hamlet. So it benefited them and it benefited us by bringing, you know, more flow into the plant and helping reducing the costs for everybody. So on that same note, you know, we do have excess capacity at the Hamlet plant and, you know, what other areas, you know, really do need sewer service. And, you know, one, one area is Fish Gill Plains. Um, there are a couple of large plazas up there that are, have, you know, one has very high vacancy, the others, you know, moderate vacancy and, and their problem is they can't get approval from the health department because their septic systems are designed too small. You know, the, the developers maxed out the footprint of the building and put very small percentages in, say, for restaurant or veterinarian or dog groomer or, or things, or dentist, things that use more water. So now, you know, they're kinda hamstrung that, you know, they're very limited on what they can rent out there, which is not good for the town either to have, you know, all this vacancy out there.
Absolutely not.
So, you know, anytime you bring new service into an area, you know, it's gonna be expensive, but that doesn't mean at least take a look at it and see exactly what would be that impact. So, uh, there are a couple of large tenants or parcel owners out there, the plazas in particular, as well as the schools. We did reach out to the two schools, Van Wick and, uh, Fish Gill Plains. Fish Gill Plains, they are both on septic systems out there, kinda hard to believe, right? These huge schools are on septic systems.
How old are those buildings, are those septic systems?
Geez, I don't know.
Van Wick, uh, Van Wick was, uh, early sixty, I think nineteen sixty, sixty-three to sixty-seven was built. So it's, uh, forty, fifty years old.
Yeah, gotta be on that order, right?
But we don't know if it's ever placed, yeah.
Well, they haven't had any, any issues, uh, the only issues they really...
Kind of city with a, with a town, with rural.
I think, I think it was sixty-four, Van Wick, I could be wrong, we went there.
Yeah, not in sixty-four.
Not sixty-four.
I mean, I will say that, that the soil types in, in a lot of those areas are, are very good and favorable for septic systems. So if they were designed properly, which you would hope a school was designed properly, you know, they have a good life. But, you know, again, when developers in, they're trying to maximize the building, they're trying to maximize the parking and they try to, I think, skimp a little bit on, on the septic. And, you know, plus, you know, maybe the school has a little better maintenance than some of these plazas, whatever the factors that go into it. Uh, the bottom line is they don't have any health department issues, the school, that, you know, they're operating fine. And it really, it would be a substantial increase in their budget for them to participate at this time with this. So we had hoped they would be on board because that would help reduce everybody else's costs.
Costs, right.
Like, like it has occurred elsewhere, but that's not the case, uh, out in Fish Gill Plains. So, you know, with that said, we did a, a benefit analysis, uh, you know, we don't have meter reads uh, in many of these businesses because they're not connected to, uh, to water. But, um, we did do a preliminary analysis, we came up with a benefit assessment of approximately twenty-four hundred dollars a year and that is based on two thousand square foot building area. Um, so we can give a couple of examples that the board would like just to, just to see. And, and again, I think the idea would be twofold, one, like in the case of Summerlin Plaza, uh, they recently, you know, advertised online and I think they're at, you know, something like forty percent vacancy. And, and I know applications come in downstairs to the Build Department and they go up to the Health Department and they get rejected because they don't have sewer capacity. So, you know, in that particular example, uh, I think we have a combined cost of approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars a year for Summerlin, which is a, a huge number, right? But if you just take a look at her advertisement and their vacancy, I think they're losing something on the order of four hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue right now. So to me, it'd be a worthwhile investment, you know, to spend seventy-seven thousand a year to bring in over four hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue. So I think it's just at least a conversation that needs to be had with, with the larger businesses out there. Because they're going to really control the fate of whether this moves forward or not. There's also, you know, vacant land out there. Right now, I think there's a hemp farm out there. So, you know, maybe that could be developed into something other than its current use. And again, increase the tax base as sewer does elsewhere, you know, so.
Well, with some of the rezoning being done over there too, where the, with the new zoning changes that are going to go over there, there's going to be places out there. There could be more stores and stuff like that.
But again, they need, they need the utilities.
But, but the same thing in the same token, we've only got so much we can add because we did lose all of Lake Walton that was supposed to go into the plan. We better explain to the schools that when it's full, it's full too.
Like if the, he, the.
If we use everything up on everything else, the school's not going to get back in.
The deputy supervisor is saying if, you know, they, if this were to go and the schools opt out later on, if they have a problem with their septic and they want to join in, there might not be capacity.
Right, 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 right.
You might be maxed out.
Well, again, you know, this is the type of project that, you know, you initiate it now, you know, maybe five years from now, we're breaking ground. You know, it takes time. Three or four, five years from now, so I, I think if, uh, the conversation could start maybe with the school board.
And those businesses.
And, and get them, get them to start coming around and say, listen, you know, this isn't going to, again, happen tomorrow or the next day, but if you can start budgeting and putting it in your five-year plan or something.
Right.
To connect to the municipal sewers, you know, because, you know, everything can last so long till the day it breaks, right? So, okay, their sewers are fine. It comes to a point where, okay, it's not fine anymore. Now what are they going to do? So they're going to be a little bit proactive. But again, to give you an example, I did take the, the numbers off, but I think the school was looking at a substantial number, at least fifty thousand or more a year. I mean, it was a substantial number.
For each?
I think, uh, I think they were kind of similar to Summerlin actually. Maybe one fifty, the larger school, and the other one, you know, thirty, something like that. Might have been about seventy-five combined, something like that.
So what, what would that do to the benefit unit? The annual cost?
Oh, I, I think it was maybe a twenty percent impact to the rates, something like that.
So it would be under two thousand dollars then?
Yeah, I mean, it was substantial because they're, they're big users, you know.
Wow. So maybe if it moves us, I, I, for me to have a conversation with the, with the superintendent of schools, maybe he could find out from the, um, the man who's in charge of all the maintenance for all the district, if they've done any repairs or major upgrades.
Just pumps, just replace pumps because they pump, you know, from the school to the fields. That, that's the only thing they've done.
Don't, eventually, over a long period of time, fifty, sixty years, don't fields break down, don't, don't, you know.
Well, eventually, everything has a useful life, yeah.
The ground doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I, I'll, I'll do that. I will ask the, uh.
It's just right now, it's, it's, it's not a problem for them. You know, the sewer plant that we helped them with down on John Jay was a problem for them, so they were very interested in doing something.
But like you said, this is something for them to consider.
For them to be proactive, yeah.
Right.
I mean, you know, think about it. Most people, you know, would like to get off their sewer if they could. It's just a matter of course.
You know, one thing about the schools to keep in mind is that years ago, maybe when Nick was in school at Van Wyk, they used to do a lot of cooking to feed their students. Right now, I know for a fact that a lot of that activity is no longer taking place.
Really?
Yeah. So, you know, the kitchens usually use a lot of water for cleaning and whatever else. I mean, it, it is important to get in touch with these people and see whether or not it will be beneficial to everybody else in the community if they tie in the project, but.
Right, this will be huge for all those businesses down three seventy-six.
They could use it.
I've had a number of these, they've expressed their interest. Yeah, they, they want to go there. Restaurants want to go in that plaza and everything. They just can't.
Right.
And what about fifty-two? Do we have plenty to get to fifty-two too?
Do we have excess capacity or are we planning?
How much capacity do we have left?
Uh, we're running at about twenty-five percent right now.
A lot.
Have a lot. We have a lot.
Plus on fifty-two, you could also use the other plant that we have over there close to John Jay, you know, the IBM plant. So if in case you're now, you have the humongous plant over there.
Well, I think that's part of the study we're doing on fifty-two to evaluate utilities.
Part of the original design of that whole plant was Lake Walton, was, how many homes did we lose there?
Oh, it's Lake Walton. You know, Twin Creeks right across the street. That, that's dormant, you know.
Important to get it to where it can be used.
The other factor, though, why we have so much surplus is the Health Department, uh, takes theoretical numbers and applies that to what you need to build. So use a hundred and thirty gallons of bedroom, you know.
Inflated numbers.
These are numbers out of, out of the standard guidebook. And what we always find is that in reality.
The actuals are much lower.
It's half, you know. But you got to build it according to the standard. But once you have the history and you can demonstrate, okay, over five years, this is what our flow is versus what you said it would be, then, then you can make progress with the Health Department.
Okay, so any other comments, thoughts? So I'll, I'll discuss with the, uh, the superintendent of schools and see where we can go from there. We'll have another discussion about it.
Chief, by the way, um, there's been few citizens that they've asked me. They saw your shirt and they see a lot of bars on your arm. I didn't know what those bars meant, but somebody said, that guy's been around a long time. Do you mind sharing what those bars are all about?
That's an accurate statement. I've been around a long time. One bar for each four years of service.
Okay. Okay, that's.
I thought one was a timeout. Do you have the other arm too, Paul?
Soon, we're going to sign the other arm.
You're going to get tall.
Yeah, that was brought to my attention. I says, I didn't know, but now I was looking at you as, as well, let them know.
So I just want to conclude with just a couple of other things. I did speak about the COVID nineteen, the coronavirus and how it's affecting our county. Just some guidelines that I've sent out to our department heads and town employees. There, Dutchess County is administering, is administering tests for this, testing for the, for the virus. It's at the discretion of the attending physician, following New York State Department of Health protocols and the CDC guidelines. So you just can't go and get this test. It, it has to be at the discretion of the physician. Just certain things, parameters to keep in mind to protect them, people yourselves with basic common, uh, personal hygiene. Cover your mouths when you're coughing or sneezing. Wash your hands regularly with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. Disinfect the surfaces in your homes and your cars, your phones. Practice social distancing. That's the reason why Dutchess County has suggested that any meetings with twenty persons or more, that we should, uh, postpone that. They want to keep a, a, a distance of six feet in between persons while you're in public. And also, if you're sick, stay home. I've, I've said this to all the employees in the town. Please, if you're not feeling well, stay home. We will be reviewing, um, our collective bargaining agreements and other policies that we have so we could, uh, uh, see what future policies we can implement or what we'll be allowed to implement. So I will, uh, keep everybody up to date on what will be going on. Our chief today had a meeting up at Dutchess County nine-one-one, uh, emergency services and about the virus and other things, but chief, could you give us a little overview about the meeting today, please?
Sure. In addition to the items you brought up, additional things are, if my guys go to a call, uh, some kind of medical calls, it's their volunteer, we try to go out and help them out. And if it is a flu-like symptom type of call, they're asking our guys to stand by. So we'll probably go to the call, not enter the residence unless we're needed, unless the, uh, emergency crew asks us to go in. And then we will don the protective equipment that we, each officer's been issued and, and assist them in however they need. So we'll be on a standby basis, so they're asking least amount of people involved other than the EMTs themselves. So those are the different, differences in, uh, current policies we have. So, um, and the other things are, we've done, every, everyone has been issued the notices that you sent out as far as precautions and, and information on the virus. Talked to the cleaning crews at, at the station. They, we refocused from floors to doorknobs and handles and railings, uh, desktops and phones. Every officer has, uh, personal protection equipment, masks, a full gown, in case they do have to deal with someone, they can. If we deal with a victim, a complaint, or a suspect in the station that is, uh, exhibits some kind of flu-like symptoms, we'll take the precautions, do quick cleaning, uh, right afterwards. And, um, we've put in a request, today's meeting, they suggested that departments put in a request for additional equipment because, as you know, everybody, all suppliers are sold out. So we are ahead of the game. We actually did that at the beginning of the week on, on your advice, thank you. So we've submitted an application for additional equipment in case we need it.
Excellent. And we, like I said before, we are in constant communication with Dutchess County, bless you, Dutchess County Department of Health.
You said that to use your hand, and you're using your hand.
County Executive's Office and, um, there are changes. It is a very fluid situation. It is a very fluid situation, so we are, um, getting updates constantly and, uh, we will put out information on our website as soon as we get it. And with that, our next meeting is March twenty-sixth, probably. We will be discussing that as well. Uh, we do have several, um, resolutions, so we will most likely be having it, but I will let everybody know as soon as I, uh, make the decision. But thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
Cleanup Day is canceled, March twenty-eighth. What about the Easter egg hunt?
Easter egg hunt will be canceled as well. We will be posting everything online on all our social media sites, on our GovDelivery, on our websites, everything that will be canceled, unfortunately. This is how we have to deal with it right now.
So what about recreation? I mean, uh, what's going on as far as, uh, the kids' games?
There's nothing scheduled yet. It's not until April is normally.
Right, usually they used to follow Cleanup Day, so.
Let me, let me just read the email from Jan today. So, um, as of today, Limekill Fitness Center will be closing effective Friday, three thirteenth, or tomorrow until further notice. The Recreation Office at Limekill will remain open Monday through Friday, eight to four. The senior center, the community center, will remain open for now, right, as you said earlier, uh.
Right now.
As of right now, but that can change. And then the use of the Van Wyk Junior High School Gymnasium has been suspended. Our East Fishkill Adult Basketball and Volleyball Leagues taking place at Van Wyk's have been canceled for the remainder of the season. And like the supervisor said, we will be posting, uh, updates as they come forth, come forward.
And, uh, Wappinger Central School, like I said, they put out, uh, some information on their website tonight. Basically, uh, the district is canceling and postponing all activities and events that are not considered to be part of the formal school day, uh, which includes certain after-school programs, including the following: field trips, off-campus travel, theater productions, they will be rescheduled, athletic competitions are to be determined. Athletics teams can still practice on campus though. Building usage by outside organizations and other everything else is by case-by-case review of the event. So as you can see, every organization is, uh, taking precautions, just as the town will, and we will get the information to you as soon as we have it.
If they made a determination, they have school plays coming out.
They're going to be postponed.
They are.
That's what I just said.
Definitely.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay. And with that, our next board meeting is March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. Who have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Needing adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.